We still don't have a number.
Try to get you home early, saw that?
They're bossy, bossy.
I'm not bossy.
Yeah.
Not at all? Just trying to move it out of the room for everybody?
Oh, you're talking about me?
I thought you were like your boss up there.
I feel better now.
You're not bossing the boss.
Good. Good evening, everybody. I have a motion to reconvene into open session. Motion Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor, five zero. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Four zero.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings of January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Motion, Mrs. Scorola, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. All in favor, four zero. That brings us up to our student liaison report. Ms. Weiss, the younger Ms. Weiss, right?
The other Ms. Weiss.
The other. You're young at heart compared to your daughter, yes? Yes.
There we go. Okay. Good evening, board members, administrators, faculty, and community members. As we move through February, our schools continue to be filled with excitement, achievement, and school spirit. From academic success and enrichment activities to athletic accomplishments and community-building events, here's a look at what has been happening across the district. Harley Avenue has been full of energy as they continue to celebrate the night's pride with school-wide pep rallies. The students had a wonderful time shopping at the PTA Book Fair on February fifth and sixth, and the PTA Special Persons Dance on February seventh was a huge success, bringing families together for a memorable evening. This week, our youngest learners are marking the Hunter's Day of School with creative costumes. Many will be dressed as if they are a hundred years old, while others will showcase a hundred stickers or other imaginative ideas. After all that excitement, they are looking forward to the upcoming winter break, followed by a fun-filled return where students will enjoy the Holly Rock Show on February twenty-fourth. Boyd has been buzzing with engaging activities as well. To start off, Mrs. McLeod's class recently held a poetry slam, where students showcased their creativity and talent. February thirteenth brought an exciting assembly with Corey the Dribbler, inspiring students with an interactive and high-energy performance. Students in third and fourth grade participated in enriching activities through the Long Island Children's Museum, with third graders exploring the spirit of invention and fourth graders engaging in game on. Meanwhile, the fifth graders are getting ready for their personality photos, capturing memories that will last a lifetime. Boyd has also bought Boyd also had a visit from Sparky, the mascot of the New York Islanders, who brought plenty of school spirit to the students. The excitement continues as rehearsals begin for their upcoming school musical, Finding Nemo. Additionally, Boyd's after-school clubs remain in full swing. Lastly, we congratulate Boyd's January JMBPs. Sophia, third grade, Connor, fourth grade, Oscar, fifth grade. Oops, sorry. February has been a time of teamwork, competition, and community building at EMS. The eighth-grade students recently participated in a mock trial, gaining valuable experience in public speaking, critical thinking, and legal procedures. This week, EMS is embracing PSI Love You Day, which aims to raise awareness about mental health and promote kindness. Students and staff are engaging in activities that encourage inclusion and support, and tomorrow, everyone is encouraged to wear purple in solidarity. Another highlight of the month was the eighth-grade Blue and White Challenge, where students faced off in various competitions while seventh graders cheered them on. The energy was electric as teams battled for the championship belt. On February third, seventh-grade students celebrated the Second Annual Middle of the Middle Day, marking the midpoint of their middle-school journey. The day was filled with fun and meaningful activities, including games like Cornhole and Spike Ball, an origami session with Dr. Moran tied to Sedaco and the Thousand Paper Cranes, and a Minute to Win It Challenge. The PTA generously provided pizza and ice cream, and the celebration concluded with a virtual book talk from author Kwame Alexander, followed by a fun guessing game using kindergarten photos. Our high school students continue to shine in academics, athletics, and extracurricular activities. Congratulations to our Students of the Month for January. Ninth grade Carissa Capalpo, tenth grade Evelyn Scalofani, eleventh grade Joel Furman, twelfth grade Jonathan Escobar Palma. Our track teams have also brought home exciting wins. Both the boys' and girls' four times two-hundred-meter relay teams were crowned D-two, number-one county champions. Congratulations to the girls' team, Amelia Maleta, Olivia Maleta, Erica Harto, and Morgan Hepburn. The boys' team, Casper Jazinski, Benny Lee, James C. Angeli, and Davin Lee. In other sports news, our boys' basketball team has made the playoffs, and our varsity wrestling team are state championships and are state champions, and we wish them luck tomorrow at counties. Another special congratulations to Taylor Aiello, who won the inaugural Suffolk County Girls Wrestling Championship in her weight class. Beyond athletics, our students continue to engage in important initiatives. Tomorrow, John Glenn High School will join the SAD club in recognizing PSI Love You Day, wearing purple in support of mental health awareness. Report cards have been posted to the student and parent portal, and academic planning is in full swing with upcoming events like World Language Week, starting March third, and International Night on March fourth. We had our eighth-grade open house, which was a success, and a college consortium on March thirteenth. Looking ahead, we have several exciting events on the calendar, including the SEPTA Bowling Fundraiser on February twenty-eighth and the Volleyball-a-Thon on February twenty-seventh. One of the most anticipated events of the year, the Natural Helpers Retreat will take place on March first and second at John Glenn High School. This retreat focuses on leadership, collaboration, and personal growth. And this year, we are introducing Project Adventure to enhance teamwork and bonding. Additionally, the District Health and Wellness Committee recently hosted a community forum on vaping awareness, providing valuable education for students and parents about the dangers of vaping. Finally, as we head into winter break, we want to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day and a relaxing, well-deserved break. Thank you.
Awesome job, Caroline. As always, thank you very much. Dr. Steele, we're up to your superintendent report.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone, who can join us here tonight and those viewing at home. Just to echo some of the words, some of the updates that Caroline shared, I did want to mention our STEAM night that we had on January twenty-third hosted for grades K through eight. This year was a carnival theme. Students and their families participated in various hands-on activities, which included making slime, creating instruments out of common items, among other things. It was a wonderful way for our families to get some insight into what our students experienced in their makerspaces and in their classrooms. So along with the carnival theme, students were treated to some popcorn and cotton candy as they completed projects. So thank you to all the families that attended, and thank you to the members of our curriculum team, Mrs. Fine, Mr. Honorado, Dr. Hood, and a special thanks to Mrs. Valley, who led the coordination of the event. And of course, we had many teachers, administrators, and students who volunteered their time. It was certainly a team effort. We were also happy to host the great for grade six through eight Lisafa Festival at Elwood Middle School. It was it's always special here, the exceptional talents of our students, along with so many others across Long Island. We were fortunate to have fourteen Elwood students here participate. So thank you to our music staff for putting that together. On February fourth, the high school team hosted a student-parent orientation for all incoming ninth-grade students, with a session dedicated to students with disabilities and their families. The guidance counselors, along with Mrs. Kelly Gorman, walked parents through scheduling, clubs, resources, and more. As mentioned, the members of our Health and Wellness Committee coordinated, collaborated with the Huntington Drug and Alcohol Counseling Center to provide that wonderful symposium on the dangers of vaping. I just want to add some feedback. Barry Zacks, who facilitated the evening, complimented our attendance. He said it was probably one of the largest audiences that he presented to. We had almost sixty people attend. So thank you to the community for your commitment to this important topic. A quick reminder that our UPK lottery registration is open and will close on February twenty-eighth. And also, just to echo some words about the world of athletics, congratulations again to Taylor Aiello, being the Section eleven Girls Wrestling Suffolk County Championship. She's moving on to competing at the state level. We heard about the accomplishments of our track team, but I would like to mention that Davin Lee becomes the first athlete in John Glenn track and field history to qualify for a state meet in three events. So we're certainly happy about that. Yes. In swimming, Evan Creeder is all-county. In the two-twenty free, the one-ten back, the two-hundred medley, the four-hundred free relay, and all-league in the two-hundred individual. And Evan will be participating in the New York State Championship in March as well. And Martin Callanese is all-league in diving. Congratulations once again to our boys' varsity basketball team for making the playoffs. Their first game will be on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, at Bayport High School at five o'clock. So I'm sure Mr. Shanahan will be putting putting out more information about that. And again, once again, congratulations to our varsity wrestling team for being state champions. We're extremely proud of this group. Congratulations to the coaching staff and our athletic director, Mr. Shanahan. And I just want to give a special thank to thank you to Captain Nick DiAmico and the members of the second precinct for their assistance that evening, giving our championship team an escort back to school from the parkway. They didn't get back home until about twelve-thirty at night, but they were ready and willing to help. Thank you to Mr. Tomio and Mr. Edwards from the board for helping facilitate that. Although it was late, parents, board members, and the community came together for that well-deserved welcome back. And I just before I turn it back over, I just want to take a moment to address an additional item. We are aware that there are some concerns in the community regarding how we as a school may respond if agencies such as ICE may arrive on school grounds. So we just want to address this and let you know, please know, that our job as a school district is to protect and safeguard all students. This does not just apply to this situation. We will respond no differently than we would if there were any agency, any person, any organization asking for one of our students or information about one of our students. There are protocols and procedures that we must follow, which include contacting parents and contacting our attorneys for assistance in verifying any type of warrant or order. The Suffolk County Police has informed us that they do not take part in removals. They are here to assist us in the protection of students. So unless there is a threat, a specific threat on school grounds, or if we as a district are enlisting the help of an agency to protect a child, we will be following the protocols mentioned. We do have New York State guidance on this, and we will be posting it on our website. But of course, if anyone has any additional questions or feel the need or want to talk this out, please don't hesitate to give me a call. I or a member of our team will be happy to discuss this with you further. So with that, I'm just going to say thank you, and everyone, enjoy a well-deserved break coming up.
Thank you, Dr. Steele. We also have a quick facilities update from the Facilities Committee. Mr. Walters is unfortunately not here this evening. He is attending a Black History Month event as another role that he serves as our deputy supervisor for highways. So he's over there in that role this evening. He sends his regrets, but he is the co-chair of that committee with me. And we got a, how many, sixty, seventy-page document, it felt like, of our building condition survey. That is something that's done every five years. It's been a little longer than five years with COVID and everything that kind of transpired. Projects and such were pushed back. So we had the opportunity as a committee to get the preliminary findings of our building condition survey. And with that, there are an immense amount of projects, although it feels like we just started our bond work on our previous referendum that the community so graciously passed. We are tasked with a lot of upcoming projects. There are things that are before us that are just out of our control. There are things that with buildings that were built in the mid-fifties and early sixties are in need of repair. So we, as a committee, are going to continue to kind of comb through all that information, work with our architects and our engineers to see and prioritize what those projects will look like. As a committee, we're going to start compiling that information and put forth some type of information as a plan and what it would look like for us as a district. And we'll present that to the Board of Education in most likely the near future. And then, in addition to that, I just want to commend our facilities, grounds, and custodial members. They do a phenomenal job within this district to do a lot with a little. They are very resourceful. They can take anything and make something out of it. They are not afraid to roll up their sleeves. They're not afraid to listen to our building administration, our students, and improve our buildings and grounds. I just want to commend them because what they do on a tight budget is phenomenal. You look at our grounds, and the conversation and the joke is always, we're a parochial school in a private, in a public setting. Our grounds are so well-kept. Our buildings, for the condition that we, you know, inherit them in, is very hard to maintain. And things are aging, and they do a phenomenal job in that upkeep. So I just want to take a moment to thank them and Ron as our supervisor, just to thank them as well. In addition to that, we're also looking to earmark some of those projects for in-house projects. Some of the conversations coming forward throughout this year and upcoming years is to figure out how can we, as a district, shoulder and encumber those kind of expenses and projects in-house? So although we're going to most likely have to figure out a way to tackle the larger scope of these projects, we're going to also try to find ways to be resourceful and do things in-house. So stay tuned to a lot of projects up ahead. All right, thank you. And that brings us up to our first residence remarks. Any residents wishing to speak this evening? I will. I will close. I feel like I'll stop talking. All right. That brings us up to our presentations this evening. We have a few presentations. Speaking of the Facilities Committee, we have students here who came to our Facilities Committee to present a project in which they're looking to bring forth. They did a phenomenal job as far as what the scope of the project would look like, how they're going to tackle it, and I'm going to move forward with letting our students through the presentation. So if you will, no further ado.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lindsay Fritch. I am one of the assistant principals at John Glenn High School. I'm excited to be here tonight on behalf of the Memorial Day Committee to introduce to the community our plan for a Wall of Heroes, a permanent tribute honoring those who have served in our armed forces. Joining me tonight are three of our student members, Wally Malhe, Bryce Blaylock, Nick Palazziano. These students have worked alongside teachers, staff, and administration to set the wheels of this project in motion. To start us off, please welcome Wally Malhe.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and members of this community. My name is Wally Don Malhe, but everyone calls me Wally. I'm a passionate student advocate, and I wish to study medicine in the future. I'm extremely honored to be able to work alongside these amazing students and, sorry, and staff to present this project. Why this project? Some background and statistics for you. More than sixteen percent of the U.S. are veterans. This is no small number. This means that more than sixteen point four million people in the U.S. are veterans. These are men and women who have sent their lives, who have dedicated their whole life to protecting this country and the ideals that it serves in our great nation. This project is a permanent feature we wish to make in order to honor and celebrate these people from our community. We wish to use this interactive display to educate and recognize the sacrifice these veterans have made and to unite the school, fostering a sense of pride, community, and unity. The board, the display will be established in the hallway next to the cafeteria, in the wall between the tech labs and the staff room as a permanent establishment. This project will include interactive presentation, shelving units to hold the various memorabilia from the military and branch symbols, and these are all to recognize the sacrifices of our local veterans. This project incorporates the joint efforts of students, school staff, community members, and various local businesses. As the U.S. Representative Jeff Miller once said, "The willingness of America's veterans to sacrifice for our country has earned their, our lasting gratitude." That's the reason we can all sit here today, talking with each other freely and discussing our ideas openly, is because of these soldiers who have served this nation. This is why it is a way for our community to grow. This is why this project is important. Thank you all for your audience today. Up next is my fellow student and project member, Bryce Blaylock.
Oh, thank you, Wally. Hi, Board of Education and Community Members. My name is Bryce Blaylock, and I'm a senior at John Glenn High School. I have a passion for technology and plan to pursue a major in computer science. I'm honored to be working on this project, and I'm excited to share our vision with you today. For our materials and cost, we have a sixty-five-inch smartboard TV, which is approximately three thousand dollars, which is generously donated by Tech Educational Technology Company. We have military symbols, which are approximately three hundred dollars. We have shelving materials, which is approximately one thousand two hundred dollars. And we have the keyboard and mouse, which the school already has in possession. We have the application that will be used to loop veteran information via Madlearn, the software that we're going to be using to display our project. And we have a micro PC, the processing unit, which will be five hundred dollars. And lastly, our miscellaneous, our miscellaneous costs, which will be one thousand five hundred dollars. Next up is Madlearn. Madlearn is a core feature of our veterans installation. It's an app which will, our team will utilize to create the software program that the installation will be ran through. The team for this initiative includes our supervisors, Ms. Gassillon, and Ms. Clem, and myself, serving as the leader, and a dedicated group of eleventh-grade students. These students will play an important role in the project's development, and when I graduate, they will take over the process to ensure the project continues and remains successful. For our initial vision, we are working to create an interactive display that displays, that honors local veterans, which will include a picture wheel featuring images of veterans, along with memorabilia and the symbols representing the different branches of military. Version one for our project will display and lay the foundation for our project, bringing together key elements like photos, stories, and symbols related to our veterans. Once completed, the display will be ready to engage with community members, allowing students to connect and learn from history of our local veterans. Looking ahead, our plans include the development of version two, which will be, which will be done when I leave and graduate, sadly. And it would have the features of a secure browser and the search menu. This will enable users to explore additional information about artifacts showcased showcased in the, in the display, making the display more interactive and educational. I would just like to thank you for your time and support as we work to bring this important project to life, and I'm excited to see how we'll continue to honor our veterans and serve as an educational resource for a stu, for a school and community for years to come. I'll now hand it off to Nick to discuss the information regarding the timeline and fundraising for the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicholas Paul Shano, and I, and I'm excited to share the timeline and key steps for the Wall of Heroes Initiative. Our journey began in December with the initial planning phase. A combination of teachers, students, and staff members came together to lay the foundations for a project that would honor our veterans with the lasting symbol of gratitude. With the project leaving the beginning planning stages, the Memorial Day Committee has determined a thorough course of actions to generate the funding required. In the next upcoming weeks, we will begin our fundraising efforts and continue these strategies up until April. During this time, we will have the ability to partner with local businesses, such as Anthony's Coal Fire Pizza and other local eateries. Here, we will host give-back programs in which a portion of all proceeds generated will be donated back to the Wall of Heroes Initiative, along with the hopes of creating a partnership with Home Depot for any additional material costs. To maximize our fundraising, we will also be continuing the sale of flags for our Field of Honor, along with hosting bake sales and raffles. With fundraising underway, we will begin the initial construction phase, along with finalizing the multimedia software contents. To ensure this project is both meaningful and accurate, committee members are working closely with guidelines established by the Department of Defense's Community and Public Outreach Division to guarantee that all official military seals are properly displayed. We will also be working closely with both our technology and our classes to help with the creation of this project, to help bring together our John Glenn High School community. This project is intended to be completed and revealed to the community on April, excuse me, on May twenty-third in a dedicated ceremony with local community members, students, staff, veterans, and active military members, as a way to unite the entire Elwood community under this project. Next, I would like to direct your attention to the Field of Honor and Wall of Heroes donation form. This form will not only allow us to collect donations, but is an essential role in helping to collect information to be used in the multimedia presentation. Here, veterans and their families have an opportunity to submit memorabilia to be displayed, along with collecting information on service members to be submitted and implemented into our database, where students have the ability to learn about local veterans in the area. Thank you. We look forward to your continued support, and we will be happy to answer any questions.
So I just want to say, Nick, Wally, and Bryce, awesome job. Appreciate you coming out this evening and conveying, again, what you did to the Facilities Committee. It's just important for the full Board of Education to see what a wonderful job and the effort that they put into. This is a brainchild that clearly is no small feat. You got a lot of steps that you put together and a lot of facets, technology, construction, fundraising. So it's just really important that the community got to see what a wonderful idea that they are bringing forward to our school district. So thank you for that. And I will remind you, because I told you during the meeting, you know, John Glenn was a former Marine and aviation pilot. So anything that we can do to kind of force the John Glenn family to give some memorabilia, that would be an awesome piece of history that we could have for our school as well. So anything we can do as a Board of Education to assist and be a part of this with you guys, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love this. I love this idea. The presentation was awesome. So thank you, guys. How did the idea, I know you spoke, but like, how did you brainstorm? How did it come about? Like, was it something that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, so the project really started to be, become developed, really under the hands of Mrs. Fritch. She really had the idea after becoming inspired by, I believe, what Smith, what Smithtown had implemented into their school.
Okay.
And not only that, but also it came together by making sure that we really are making an impact in our community by allowing different stakeholders, as Wally was talking about, that this isn't just a project to be decided by a few, but really to be decided by many of us and have a lasting impact on all of us here at John Glenn.
I think it's such a beautiful patriotic thing to do. Let me ask you something. The TV that you're going to get, you talked about being interactive. Maybe this is a Bryce question. Is it something where like, you know, when you go somewhere, you can like touch it, and it'll bring you to different points, and you can like learn about, if I wanted to learn about the, you know, military?
I think what we talked about through the committee was this is kind of like if you went to the Smithsonian or different.
And you touched, right?
I'll let Bryce go through, but it's very cool.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. It's going to be museum-like, really. You hit it spot on. Like, people are going to be able to come up, tap on the picture, whatever memorabilia it might be, and just really learn and really just appreciate the history.
I love that. And you're developing it, right?
Yeah, correct, correct.
What a brainstorm. It's great.
It's awesome. And then we're talking through the committee that some of the components of this could be curriculum-based, that we will tie it into socialized classes, going on virtual field trips to our interactive board and do history projects. And it also serves as a tool and a resource for our classes and our students to be interactive, to learn about the history that they're learning in their classrooms as well. So it really serves, it's a multifaceted project that's going to serve dividends to our district and our students.
Well, thank you, guys, because it is amazing.
Dr. Siddiqui? I'm going reverse order, sorry.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. And I also, as my colleagues have mentioned, I'm so excited to see this kind of interactive museum display right in our school for our students. And I love the fact that it's incorporating so many different facets of, you know, history, current events, just and, and people here now and their, and also all of their contributions to all that has happened. I love that it's interactive. My question, and it's not really a question or more of a comment, was that I love the fact that it will be able to be updated, right? Like, it's something that's like talking about history, but also moving forward if there's new. If there's new, you know, information or new, something more that you need to include, that is something that's upgradable and always will be continuing to be part of the, you know, John Glenn community and part of the fabric that's, that is making it happen, right? Correct?
And Bryce signed a multi-year zero dollar contract to work for us with the district in perpetuity. So we are in good hands.
I think you'll be invited back, all of you will be invited back for the future, you know, two point O and three point O that will be happening. So, yeah.
Do you have somebody already in like an eleventh grader or tenth grader that you're like kind of mentoring up? So that when you leave, unless you're planning to go locally and then you're going to stick around and finish?
I mean, right now we have a team, so I'm pretty sure last week we just got everyone acclimated to the software we're going to be using. So it's not really one person, but more of a group, I would say.
So Mrs. Scroll? Okay, good. I'm not used to going on this. Great job, great job. I love the educator in me. I love that this is a true student authentic experience. You're using your critical thinking skills. So it's all the things that we look for as educators. So kudos to you, Ms. Fritsch. Thank you for guiding our students. You know, I graduated from Glenn ninety-seven. One of my alumni, Mr. Christopher Russo, served in the reserves. He fortunately passed away in service. So I know we have a lot of community members, alumni. How do you plan on seeking out these people that have served for our country so they can be part of this? How are you going to try to find these people?
Yeah, so thank you for the question. So with the Field of Honor and Wall of Heroes donation form, there's a large section in which families or active military members are able to submit their family stories or their own stories to be here. It's really, we want, we almost don't want it to be as if a military member is forced to have their information, but instead it's voluntary. So a family has the option to submit their, to submit this military member to this database in which students will be able to learn from their service.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Maybe you can reach out to our Director of Technology. Maybe he can put a link on the website, because a lot of people probably would sign up really quick.
We're also looking, starting tomorrow, we're going to start putting out parent squares with the information. We are also, the students are making flyers that are going to go out into the community, posters that we're going to disseminate throughout the community and drop off at local businesses. So we're going to try to get it out to as many people as possible.
Yeah, maybe like a Google form with a QR code, because people will fill that right out. I think it's great. Like I said, congratulations. It's not easy speaking in front of people. You did a phenomenal job. You look sharp. Whatever you need from us, please just reach out. We'll support you anyway. Thank you so much.
Awesome, yes. Just want to thank the full team. I know Ms. Fritsch, this is part of your brainchild, but it's the full high school administration also was a part of it. It's Mr. McNamara and Ms. Sixthelf also. Yeah, picture? Can we put the screen back up to have the Wall of Honor's flag to begin the presentation? And you guys can go under that. We'll have a nice backdrop. Yes. All right. All right, Dr. Steele, we're up to our second of three presentations this evening. This one is on the mid-year goals. Take it away.
Okay, good evening everyone. It just seems like we were here just presenting our goals and here we are midway through the year. So let's get right into our progress. We of course start with our district mission statement. It's always good to begin with our statement as a reminder of our commitment to the overall success of our students. Our first goal, extraordinary student focus. Our first goal is our main goal, because everything we do is about students. This goal is the reason for all the others. This work involves research on current and best practices paired with an analysis of student performance data. And all this is used to identify the necessary resources to maximize student success. So what are we doing? Now, the progress in this goal is chock full and ongoing. As I said, this is the center of everything we do. We'll start with the continued work that we're doing around the science of reading. I know discussions began last year. And this year, we have actually implemented professional development on both the elementary and secondary levels. A big part of this is the K-five literacy pilot, which you've been hearing about for the past few months. We're looking forward to the decision that will be made next month. And then we'll be presenting a program to the board for approval so we can begin professional development as soon as possible, so we can be ready for a smooth implementation in September. All programs that we're piloting are grounded in the science of reading and the New York State literacy standards. As we continue to implement the computer science and digital literacy standards, we have enhanced our activities in the maker spaces. Students, especially at the intermediate level, are participating in coding lessons using things like Dash Robots, which were premiered at our STEAM fair. Our instructional technology enrichment specialist works and collaborates alongside our library media specialist. And they both collaborate with the classroom teacher in presenting and creating project-based learning activities. So an example of this might be something like Book Creator, where the teacher is learning, getting professional development on how to use that with their students. And then it's being reinforced in the library spaces. And it's all content-based material. Our Director of Technology has organized and facilitated our AI committee. So people that are participating in that committee have been piloting various AI programs. They are receiving professional development on the appropriate use of AI as an instructional tool, as well as assemblies for students on the same. And digital and news literacy is part of our essential literacies, which I'm going to mention on the next page. But I just wanted to make mention of it here because it is grounded in computer science and digital literacy standards as well. So as we evaluate current course offerings and curriculum, we are starting to align what we do with the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations for graduation pathways. And part of that is what I just mentioned about the implementation of essential literacies in the ninth grade, also with the financial literacy course in grade seven. Because this is the first year of essential literacies, the curriculum is being refined. As we move along, we receive feedback from teachers and students as well. We also have, our students also have opportunities to participate now in independent AP courses, which are done virtually. And we received approval for economics dual enrollment through Malloy College. So we're excited about those additions. We're also very excited about bringing virtual enterprises to Elwood for next year. The curriculum team did a site visit. And also, we are about to complete our application to become part of this program. Students will participate in hands-on learning activities where they experience potential career opportunities. VE is a real business experience. It involves research, marketing, developing in fields such as HR, IT, finance, sales, accounting, et cetera. So I'm excited to learn more about what this will bring to our district, but more excited to see where our students will actually go with this. It's a wonderful learning opportunity that can also lead to various career pathways for our students. We are continuing with the implementation of the next generation science standards, along with the New York State storyline curriculum. Our new curriculum in, for grades three through eight, Inspire Science, has been implemented this year. And our revised curriculum for living environment and earth science as well. And they're all aligned with the expectations of the New York State science standards, which encourages and really incorporates exploration and engagement of students with phenomena, which would start with a question and the students would create their storyline for creating different components of the phenomena. And we will have a full science presentation, I believe it's in May, about our new science curriculum. So we look forward to that. As far as vertical and horizontal alignment, it's inherently happening right now with the primary and the intermediate schools with the work they're doing around the pilot. There's a lot of cross-conversation across grades, across buildings. But for the middle school and the high school, Dr. Moran and Mr. McNamara are pretty passionate about their work around this. So along with their APs, they have created opportunities for staff across the buildings to share models for things such as instructional rounds, learning walks. And they facilitate a professional development workshop during Superintendent's Conference Day on grading equity. So this is a movement that they started this year. They will have more conversations at our next Superintendent's Conference Day and they're going to move forward with looking at aligning the expectations for grading across the middle and the high schools. We're continuing with professional development on differentiated instruction and culturally responsive pedagogy across the buildings. So all staff is part of the same conversation. And when they come together, they can have those meaningful conversations across the grades. We are now starting to look at our MTSSI plan. What happens with the implementation of new curriculum and new standards? We have to start to revise our criteria for tier movement within our plan. So we are starting to revise that. The more curriculum we introduce, the different types of assessments we have, but it paints a different picture, a bigger picture for our students. So we're looking forward to that. All buildings this year have started to use Intellispark, which is the program for housing information. So it doesn't only just house the data, but it can have, it does have information on IST meetings, different conversations about interventions. But the beauty of this program is that it follows the student, right, throughout their career at Elwood. So as we build upon this, teachers, just say in eighth grade, can look back and see some of the conversations that we had about a student maybe in third grade. So we're not repeating interventions. We're moving forward with our planning. And just including student voice, we continue to do things like shared decision-making and student council. But one thing I have done this year is facilitated roundtable meetings at each building. And the students were a big part of that. And in some buildings, the students really took over the meeting, but it was a great thing. It was a great thing. Their feedback was well-received. Someone from all stakeholder groups was in that group, but they all appreciated what the students had to say. So goal number two, this two, goal number two is not only for financial planning, to support the programs and instruction that we were just speaking of, but it's also to support the maintenance and enhancement of our physical plant. It involves a constant review of current conditions and a plan for supporting the stability of our budget. So all of this work that we're talking about is part of the development of our five-year plan. I know Mr. Tomio spoke about our last Facilities Committee meeting, where we did look at the results of that building condition survey. So what we're starting to do is prioritize those projects based on those recommendations. Some of our daily work and improvements, I told Ron, I would definitely give him a shout out and mention some of the great work that they're doing, refinishing floors. They've added water bottle filling stations in each building. Now, we are required to maintain a certain amount of traditional bubblers, those traditional water fountains in our buildings, I think is one per one hundred students that we have. So we are compliant with that. But we know the need and the healthier choice at this point, put it that way, is the water bottle filling stations. So we're adding on to those. New directional signage in each building makes it easier for visitors, for students to get around. Of course, in the event of an emergency, it's also easier for people to follow. And we have a wonderful new press box in our football stands. We are happy to report that we received the designation on our fiscal stress score. And I know Mrs. Dunkle is going to speak briefly about that when she does her presentation next. And we were able to allocate a lot of the federal grant funding in, you know, getting the purchases, purchasing the resources and the materials necessary to support the new curriculum and the professional development that goes along with that. For goal number three, it takes the village, right? And part of that village is the partnership we create that leads to more opportunities for our students. So we continually look for ways to tap into our resources within our own community. And this will only strengthen our network for support and communication. So we saw at our last meeting, you know, the growth of our opportunities and internships at the high school and the impact it's having on our students. It was great to hear that from the students themselves and know that this is another avenue. It only helps to create those individual pathways for students. And it's sort of allowing them to try on, right, different avenues, different careers, and different possibilities for them. We also hosted two parent universities. Now, full disclosure, we had one for elementary and one for secondary. The turnout wasn't what we expected, but we learned from that. So that tells us that we need to reach out. We're going to do some outreach to the community and hear from the community what they want us to offer in parent universities. We want these meetings to be meaningful. We want them to be helpful. Well, one night that was very well-attended, like we said, was our STEAM night. So we look forward to that every year. The theme changes every year. And it was just a wonderful turnout. And of course, we value our internal partnerships, whether it's PTA leaders, Membership Booster Club, the Elwood Athletic Club. One thing that we are focusing on this year is trying to create opportunities across buildings, across these organizations. One thing the PTA is going to move forward with is creating an event where we have our kindergarten and our seniors come together. So it's involving the PTAs on both ends and the incoming and outgoing nights. So we're looking forward to more opportunities like that. And then lastly, we do a wonderful job when we talk about and address the health and safety concerns of our students, staff, and our community. These discussions have changed over the years, but they really have allowed us to hone in on the details and the relevance of health and safety concerns, whether we're talking about SEL initiatives, security, or technology. We have learned of the important part that this plays in fostering a well-rounded educational environment for all. We have been fortunate to form partnerships that assist us with this goal. As we mentioned earlier, the members of our Health and Wellness Committee formed a partnership with the Huntington Drug and Alcohol Counseling Center to put together that vape symposium, which was very well-received. We've gotten some great parent feedback. So we are going to be looking to have more of those come in so that more people, we can spread the word and about other avenues, about other topics as well. Our psychologists and social workers continue to participate in professional development through our consortium with, consortium with Nassau Boise's Mental Health. And this year, we've signed on to Huntington Youth Court. Now, we were a part of Huntington Youth Court as far as having students go there to learn about the judicial system. They learn and perform, you know, duties as a judge, as a lawyer, as a court officer. But we've also signed on this year as part of our initiative around restorative practices. So for students who may have committed, you know, some sort of offense or infraction that goes against our code of conduct, we can actually work with the Huntington Youth Court, where they can go there and present their situation to their peers. And their peers would work with them on an alternative consequence to something, you know. peers would work with them on an alternative consequence to something, you know, like other than a suspension. So we're happy to be part of that program this year. As a way of educating our students on the nature and history and consequences of hate crimes, we have partnered with the District Attorney's Hate Crimes Division. They came in and did school-wide presentations on the education of what a hate crime is, the consequences that go along with that, and they were actually able to share some local data with our students. That was well-received as well. And we are excited about other ways of educating. We, in the high school, they have begun or initiated the Names and Not Numbers Initiative. They started this a few months ago with an ongoing project. High school students are interacting with actual Holocaust survivors. They conduct interviews, they're filming the interviews, and at the same time, they're learning history firsthand. They are going to, the end result will be a documentary that they will put together, which we will be able to share with the community as well. So we're certainly excited about the product of that at the end of the year. Eighth grade will be visiting the Holocaust Museum in Glen Cove, and we are happy to say that we are on track to receive a Gold Star designation as a No Place for Hate District, because all of our schools will receive this designation as well. They are anticipated to complete all of the required lessons. And finally, when we talk about security, this is a continued evaluation, every drill, every protocol that we follow, the trial of our systems. The important part of those drills is the debriefing that comes afterwards, whether it's the debriefing among the team, with our SROs, other members of the local police department. They help us, you know, strengthen our drill process even more, because they're here on-site with us. We also have updated our locks in all of our buildings for more efficient, they will be more efficient to use in the event of a lockdown or in any other unfortunate crisis situation. And new fencing has been installed at Boyd as well to just, to secure the perimeter around the school even more. And in addition to that, there's always continuous oversight when it comes to cybersecurity. A couple of things we put in place, anti-phishing programs, two-factor authentication for staff just to secure their emails, and basically any information that we can get that will give us, you know, a breakdown of any types of possible threat events, whether that's on a day, a daily basis, a category of events or a level of event, every little bit helps. So I know that was a lot and a little bit of time, but the truth is, we are doing a lot. We know we continue, know that we are continuing with our mantra of "we are all in." This is a group effort, it's a collaborative effort. And I just want to take a moment to thank the members of our administrative team for not only helping me to put this together, but their work every day in their buildings. We meet individually, we meet as groups, and this is what we talk about, this is our daily work. So their work every day in their buildings and in their departments is the true driving force that's providing our teachers and students with everything that they need in order to succeed. So I thank you, but with that, do you have any questions?
I'll go the right order, Mrs. Scrola.
You get to go first this time.
Thank you so much for sharing all the updates on the goals this year. We're moving in the right direction under your leadership, I really appreciate it. I want to thank you and your staff for continuing to make Elwood better. We never settle in Elwood, we're always looking to improve and grow, and under your leadership, we're off to a great start. So kudos to you and to your team, and we're very lucky that you're here in Elwood and support you whatever you need moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Mr. Scrola stole my whole thing, so I echo that. I started taking notes on your presentation. Thank you for your presentation, it was amazing. I started taking notes, but then I gave up because I really felt, everything was phenomenal. I agree with Mr. Scrola, and I'm sure the rest of my board too, that under your leadership, it seems that there's been so much accomplished, you're always trying to, you know, improve, and I really congratulate you and your team for making such a success. I just had like a couple of, I felt like the presentation was very robust. I really felt the collaboration throughout, and I really feel like you took the goals that we talked about over the summer and kind of just like raced and ran with them. And I think we are going towards a very successful year, so I'm very happy about that. And that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you, thank you so much.
So ditto, ditto. It was, I appreciate the effort that you put into this, because it really, at this point, we're at, you know, January, and you've been here, you know, really since June, so what people don't realize is how much work gets done over the summer, a majority, and we develop our goals of where, our vision and where we want to be, and you really took those, that mission and developed those goals, and then went down and really kind of formulated a plan with your team and really are accomplishing them, and we're really on an amazing track. You know, you can see the things even just around the school, the visuals, the signs that have gone up, and all the little things that get done that really go under and add up into those goals. And it's just, it is, it's very, I guess robust is the word, it was very detailed, and I think we're making great progress. And, you know, I appreciate your leadership, I mean, we hired you so, but no, it's, you really are doing an extraordinary job, and I think that all of you guys are. I mean, it's just, it's incredible, it's a good collaboration, and it's, I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
See, it's good to go first, Tom, because then you have nothing left to say. But I do have stuff to say. I just want to go back to how you started your presentation. I want to end the presentation for you that way as well. Everything you've done is rooted in our mission statement. I look back at our mission statement from kindergarten to senior year, "to provide an excellent experience that empowers and inspires each student to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally in evolving global society." If this doesn't say that's what we're looking to accomplish, then we're not doing our job, and this is what we're doing, which we're doing our job, and so artfully are you doing it with your team. I think it's very easy as a leader to sit there and say, "Look what I've accomplished." And I think I, what I took away from most of the presentation was how you embodied your team. Like this is, this doesn't get done by one singular person, this is a team effort. So I commend your leadership by saying that, because it's not always easy to sit there and give credit where credit's due, it's easier to take it and own it and kind of pat yourself on the back. And we know as a board, but not everyone does all the time, know that we have an incredible administration that goes above and beyond every single day, and a lot of this work is done after hours, right? A lot of the work that's done in the offices, it has to get done nine to five. It's the after-hours where the goals and the vision and all that starts to formulate, so we know that this is an addition too. So I really appreciate all of that, that it's getting done, and just really proud of us as a district. We're starting to really touch upon things that districts with a lot of resources accomplish because they have the resources. I'll go back to what I said through the Facilities Committee, we do a lot with a little. So our, you know, career vocational opportunities that we're offering to our students, our college credit-bearing courses that we're offering to our students, our opportunities for them to go on cultural-relevant field trips such as the Holocaust Museum, bringing in programs like the vaping, these are things that districts sometimes get. We're giving our students all of this in one year. So it is a huge lift, and just kudos to everybody, keep up the great work.
Thank you. I'll make sure I relay that to the team, I appreciate it.
Yes, please do. Thank you. Yes, students first. All right, last and the most exciting probably of all presentations this evening, Ms. Dunkel, Budget Workshop Number Three.
Good evening and thank you. As Mr. Tomio said, tonight is Budget Presentation Number Three. So for tonight's presentation, we're providing an update on the budget process thus far. We will be reviewing our budget goals, our fiscal health, state aid, the tax cap calculation, and some challenges that we're facing. As always, our highest priority is to maintain the excellence and diversity of offerings within our current program, as well as the safety, health, and welfare of all of our students. As you just heard from Dr. Steele, Elwood provides many opportunities to our students and to the community, and our goal is to continue that tradition. First up is our fiscal health. Elwood has again received no designation, which is the best rating you could receive from the New York State Comptroller's Office. This rating system was created as an early warning system for communities and districts to alert them of potential fiscal problems. That being said, though we received no designation, our score did increase from a zero to a 10. The elevation, this elevation can be attributed to our prolonged use of reserves and fund balance. Essentially, we are continuing to spend down in our savings. If our score was to increase above 25, the designation would change to susceptible to fiscal stress. This designation would affect our credit rating and could cost us money on future borrowings. Continuing on the discussion, we will now review some of our various revenue resources. First is an overview of our current state aid proposal for the '25-'26 school year. As you can see in the chart, our overall increase is 1.47%, which equates to $274,000. These numbers will not be finalized until New York State adopts their budget, which is due on April 1st. At this time, we do not anticipate any significant changes in those numbers. Bless you. The next portion of revenue is the tax levy. The slide on the screen is our tax cap calculation, which is one of my favorite things to try to explain. So I'll just briefly go over for the community of swatching.
Marley?
And the board. The tax cap calculation starts, I guess, you can't see the red light in the white? Okay. Starts with our current tax base, which is roughly $53 million. That is multiplied by a tax growth factor, and the tax growth factor is a measurement of new property and construction within the district's boundary. This number is provided by New York State. The second factor that is used for multiplication purposes in the calculation is the allowable growth factor. This is also provided by New York State, and this is the portion of the tax cap formula that is well-known for the limit of 2%. So a lot of people think the tax cap itself in its entirety has a limit of 2%, but that's not reality. The reality is the tax, the allowable growth factor is the portion that cannot exceed And then the largest portion of the, oops, sorry, go back, the calculation is our capital exclusion, which is that little graph on the right side. That is a portion of the formula that allows for flexibility based on district's current debt-to-aid ratio. This exclusion is why districts across the state have such varying tax levy limits. It is unique to each and every school district based on their actual debt and their actual building aid debt they're receiving from New York State. As you can see, our allowable limit is currently calculated at 1.29% and is not expected to This chart just reflects a 10-year history of our tax levy and the allowable limit, and as you can see, out of the last 10 years, we have either been at or below the limit. We did levy below the limit six out of these 10 years. And again, this was a collaborative effort with the board and the community to try to minimize tax increases during those specific years. Taking those two pieces of the revenue information we have thus far, the district is facing a challenging budget cycle. Our property tax cap allows for an increase of $684,000, our state aid increases $274,000, so that combined total is roughly $958,000, which does not cover our required obligations. Based on the estimated expenditures we have thus far, we're facing a deficit of approximately $2.7 million. And this, that dollar amount does not take into consideration the potential loss of federal aid that may occur as a result of the President of the United States' funding proposal. So right now, the United States Department of Education is under review, as I'm sure everybody is aware, and there's a lot of talk of potentially losing federal aid. We do not have any substantial information as to what is going to happen. If we are to lose federal aid, we would be in a further deficit, but I will keep the board updated as information does come out. This next slide represents the current expenditures. They're estimated at this point, and I'll continue to speak about that, versus the current revenues, and as you can see, this is where we calculate the $2.7 million deficit. The expenditure budget is roughly $80.5 million, and the revenue is $77.7, so when you subtract one from the other, you get a deficit of $2.7 million. How do we address this deficit? Currently, there are two options that are being discussed. We can propose piercing the tax levy limit of 1.29%, or we can consider reducing some program. When we talk about reducing program, we're looking across the school district as a whole. It could include reductions in staffing across the board, meaning administrative, teachers, support staff, we would look at every department, reduction, possible reduction in athletics and extracurricular activities, increased class sizes, reduction in electives, and again, these are just some of the items that would have to be looked at if in fact we are looking to reduce program. I'm just gonna read a quote from the New York State School Board Association Executive Director Bob Schneider. "Inflation has been higher than 2% for the last four years. When the allowable tax levy growth factor legs behind inflation, school districts are pinched between greater expenses and limited ability to increase tax revenue without supermajority approval." So piercing the tax cap that we're discussing would allow for all current programs and staffing to remain, depending on which percentage we end up going out at, but this type of vote, the piercing the cap, would require that 60% supermajority passing rate, which is different from the traditional 50% of a budget that is within the tax levy cap. While piercing the cap will sustain program for this year, we must also take into consideration our long-term, long-term goals. As always, we take a multi-year approach when budgeting. As inflation continues to rise, the cost of our expenditure obligations continue to grow at a much faster pace than our revenues, especially when we are limited by the tax cap and a lack of other revenue sources available to the district. What is next? Work continues on our expenditure budget with a focus on special education, technology, and BOSI's programs. One positive, we do anticipate some of our personnel expenses to decrease as we await notification of potential, notification of retirements that actually have been flowing in more so this week, and we have quite a few of them on our agenda tonight for approval. So each time a long-term employee, most of the retirements we're seeing at this point are coming in as teachers, a long-term teacher retires, we do see quite a bit of savings in our budget, so that will help with the proposed expenditure budget that is forthcoming. That expenditure budget will be presented to the board at the next board meeting in March. And just one last statement for the board and the community. I just, I, please be confident that the possibility of proposing a budget that pierces the cap is not an option that's taken lightly, but we are finding ourselves in a very difficult position. But we must take steps at this point to secure our financial future and allow the Elwood School District to continue on its path of success for all of our students and the Elwood community as a whole. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Dunkel. Any questions from the board? Then to Scrola, Dr. Siddiqui.
I did have, I did have one question, and I feel like I ask you this every year, so just for my brain and for the sake of the community that may be also thinking about this, or kind of just to reiterate, and I know you talk about this and I ask about it every year, but can you just comment on how important it is, like the update on the fiscal health, that we have been kind of relying on borrowing from our reserves?
Correct.
And now we kind of see a little bit of an increase in the fiscal stress. So can you just reiterate? I mean, you already said it, but, yes, please, thank you.
Yeah, so the, the, the New York State Comptroller's Office has this grading system, if you'll call it that, for all municipalities, and they take all different financial and econ, that's not the word, all different financial- econ, that's not the word, all different financial statistics regarding that municipality and put it into almost a rubric. And based on your level of fund balance and your level of reserves, your debt ratio, there are multiple factors. They use that as a grading system for a rubric, and then they come up with a score. So we've been consistently at zero because none of our, we're not any, any risk in any of our categories, but this year, as I mentioned, we came in as a 10 because our, the level of reserves and fund balance that we're at has been decreasing. So when that is decreasing as a portion of your entire budget or your entire equity, your score goes up. So that's why, that's one of the pieces why we're seeing our score driven up. And again, I know we've talked about it the last couple of years. We spoke about it the prior two budget presentations this year. You know, it's, it's great for school districts to have reserves and fund balance to rely on. That's why some of it exists. Some of it exists for emergencies, but to consistently deficit spend and use those reserves and fund balance puts you in a very bad position because eventually those will run out. And that's why we're saying we're, we're spending our savings. Usually you want to spend a little bit of savings and put some back. The last few years, we have not had the capability to do that. We've been spending it and not putting it back. So that's why our, our fiscal strength, I would say, is weakening. Thank you.
Sure.
Hi. But also, the higher the number, when you go to borrow, it increases your rate.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So that's the correlation. So the better your, it's, it's like your credit score. The better your score is, the better borrowing rate you get. And that's why it's important to us because ultimately, we're going to have to go out for a bond, right? Or we, if we have to borrow for anything, we want to have as good a rate as we did.
Correct.
Like when we did a bond several years ago, we got a much better rate, which saved us a couple of million dollars, correct?
I would say we saved hundreds of thousands of dollars on interest over the course of the bond, yeah. Yes, the lower the score, the lower your designation. Again, we have no designation right now, but as the score increases, you become susceptible to fiscal stress, and then there's two more levels. You'd never want to get to the fourth level because I think that's where the state actually comes in and tries to assist with, you know, financial planning as far as the district is concerned. But yes, if we're, if our designation was to change from no designation to susceptible, it's basically saying that our financial outlook is not positive, and if we had to go out for another Moody's rating to borrow money, we would be hit because our credit rating would kind of drop. We'd be hit with higher percentage rates.
Okay. Well, I just want to make that clear. And something else I also want to make sure that people understand, our tax cap is, you anticipated to be 1.29%, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that 1.29% is equal, that is our 2% cap. So our 2% cap is not 2%, right? It's 1.29.
Right. Our cap is 1.29, correct? If we, if we wanted to go to 2%, we'd be piercing the cap. Right, our, our cap is below the, and that's why I was trying to explain that piece of the tax cap formula. The only, there's only a piece of the formula that is capped at 2%, and it's the tax, it's basically CPI. Whatever CPI is, that's what that growth factor is, except it's capped at 2%. And CPI of the last few years has been well above 2%, but the governor is not willing to change that piece of the formula, so it's constantly been held at 2%.
And when does the governor's, I know notoriously, it's been coming out later, which, again, we rely on her information to build our budget. When do we anticipate her final numbers coming out? I know last year was April something?
So April 1st is the New York State, New York State budget deadline. We actually are anticipating this year it be approved on time. I think she has turned her outlook slightly. The outlook we had last year where she was looking at possibly reducing aid across New York State is not happening, and people think she's being much more cooperative because she's heading into an election year, so we do anticipate the budget being passed on time.
Okay. And I don't even want to ask this question.
Go ahead.
This is giving more aid.
I don't. You know, typically, our aid does not change from the initial run to the final, you know, sometimes it fluctuates, and it's usually, it could be $20,000, it could be 50. It's, it's never been anything I will call significant that is going to make or break the budget.
I'll say, I mean, my understanding too is the, with the president doing, eliminating or proposing to eliminate the Department of Ed, the whole idea was to move that funding into the states. So is there any talk about that happening, or, because I can't imagine it just going away, like, and not, I know you're giving me that face.
No, no one, no one really knows. I mean, they're, right, no one really knows. There, there is talk of eliminating on a federal level and giving more local control to the states.
To the states, so I wouldn't even be able to get that.
Right. So the advocacy groups that I take, partake in, and some of the meetings I've been to, when we talk about that, it doesn't, we don't feel it's going to help Long Island very much overall, even if state control was to take over, because historically, the money that comes from Long Island helps fund education in the rest of the state. We never get our fair sho, we never get our fair share of aid considering the taxes and everything else that we pay. So it's, no one's really thinking that's going to help us long-term, but again, we have no idea at this point.
And would any of the, and this is just a question, like a question, would any of the unfunded mandates that we've been, you know, that we've had been obligated to do, is there any talk of any of those being, like, funded?
Nope.
So that would change the equation?
No.
No.
Nope. The only, one of the more positive thing that's coming, that we anticipate will be in Hoggles' budget, is free and, uh, free.
Free and reduced lunch.
For everyone. So that doesn't really affect our general fund budget. It may minimize the transfer to the school lunch fund if we had, like, we have to do that for negative balances sometimes, but if everyone has free lunch, we wouldn't have to worry about negative balances. But the benefit of that is every child will have a free meal. But it doesn't really affect the general funds of any school district.
I guess people can look at that, you know, the increase in the taxes, but at least they won't be making lunch for their kids. Their kids can get free, free lunch at school. It is definitely, it's challenging.
Right, and it's, it's a very big concern, you know, for educators across the state. You know, you have children who go without, they get their food from their school every single day, but it would be a big help to families across the state.
Well, we saw that in COVID. We saw what an asset that was in COVID. So I, I mean, that is a good thing that's coming out of it. Well, I definitely wouldn't want your job, but it is, it's, it's going to be a challenging year, and I appreciate all the effort and work that goes into it because you're kind of like looking at everything. And again, you know, we're putting, our focus is on students, putting students first, and that, that's our job, that's our product. So, you know, it's harder and harder when you don't have the means to do that, and, and you have to be creative to come about, and, and there's just so much, what is it, the expression, blood you can get from a stone type of thing? So, right?
Mr. Tomio loves that, that line, yes.
Yes.
Get your blood from a dry stone, yeah. You know, it's, it's, again, it's tough because, you know, we are finding ourselves in this situation. There have been school districts the last few years who have been successful in piercing the cap. Every, you know, my colleagues, while I don't know, we don't know yet, again, we don't know exactly where we're going to be, but other districts, you know, I have not heard of many attempting to pierce the cap, but everyone's still finalizing their calculation expenditures as well. But the, the feel across Suffolk County, especially in like our local area and the town of Huntington and heading out east, is, you know, people, the school districts are heading in that direction with either higher tax caps or, you know, looking at potentially piercing.
I think as painful as it is, you know, we have to realize that our homes are our biggest asset, and they're the biggest value. And, you know, I had a realtor come and look at a piece of property in Elwood today, and she said to me that if that same, the same property in another school district, I'm not going to name them, would get me a lot less money, that because we're in Elwood and it is considered a parochial environment with the, you know, in the public arena, such a, it's in such high regard that I'm getting an estimate hundreds of thousands of dollars more in value for the property, which is considerably a lot for, you know, our small little town. But, so I just want people to realize, you know, everything in this world is going up, and it's so painful. You know, when you go to the store to buy eggs, or when you're paying an electric bill that skyrockets, but our youth and our students are, if we don't give them the best education that we can, and, you know, maybe that means not a night, a night that we don't go out to dinner, or, you know, not have those cup of Starbucks every morning, but it's going to, in the long run, going to be beneficial for our students and for our homes. So I just want, you know, nobody wants to pay more, but sometimes you have to look at the bigger picture. So I really want people to really pay attention to this budget season and to really sit down and educate themselves. You know, each one of us is a phone call. If somebody, I know you've always taken phone calls from residents to explain it. Sometimes it's a convoluted, you don't really understand, you know, the, the budget, but, you know, ask questions, get informed. Knowledge is power, and it helps you make a better decision. Don't just go and just not be educated and make a vote. It's, you know, because this local tax, local politics, I always tell people, affects you the most, and this, this definitely will affect you and hurt you in the long run.
I appreciate you bringing up those points because it is important, you know, that people do, and we're, I think we've done a very good job, you know, being transparent and communicating, and I think it's really important every year to educate the community on the budget and what it means. And there is a direct correlation to your home value, as you mentioned. So it's, it's important for everyone to be educated, and I think this year, we're really, you know, going to work with the community and stakeholders to really have everyone get a good understanding of the budget, like you said, so they can make an informed decision when they vote.
Yeah. And not only that, it's, it's with your children too. I mean, again, with the students. You know, I have a, a child who is in that college process right now. She's a senior, and the, the reputation of our school district and the quality of education that she's getting makes her more competitive than somebody in a surrounding school district. And we're very small, so we're limited in our resources, and we do a lot, like James said, a lot with a little, and we try to give these kids, you know, the best opportunities that we can, which helps them get to the next level, which makes them productive citizens, you know? And so, again, the, you have to really look at the big picture. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. So mine's more a facetious question. It's more frustrating, I think. It's just, they want you to have reserves, they want you to replenish them, they want you to spend them. We all do with our own home, our house budgets. It's something that you practice, right? You put a little away, the rainy day comes, you spend down your savings in hopes that one day you replenish it. So I think we've tried very carefully over the years to get a non-designation. We were in fiscal distress over a decade ago. We came out of it, we've put stilts in place to make sure that we have proper planning, long-term, long-term stability, and we've done that. But to sit here and look at the state aid runs, and to see it was getting under $275,000, okay? We went up $275,000 in our state aid. Cost of living on average is 8%, 9%. We got $275,000 of an increase. What do you, it's impossible. It's impossible to sit here and balance a budget and expect us to be able to borrow from a reserve, spend down our, you know, our rainy day fund, and never replenish it, but then also sit here and keep programs and everything that we love about Elwood in place. So it's, it's going to be a very challenging, challenging budget cycle. I mean, I just can't believe the foundation aid number this year. I mean, it's, I, typically, we don't get a lot, but this is just ridiculous.
Because we're on, on what they call hold harmless, so every hold harmless district is getting roughly 2%. And that's, and again, our, our state aid portion as a whole, because we're considered a wealthy district, is small. I mean, it's probably 23%, 24% of our entire revenue. The majority of our revenue is coming from the taxpayers. So that's, again, that's why we're so limited in our options, and especially when we have the tax cap limit, and we need that supermajority. It's very frustrating because, as we've all said, we've, we've done more so in recent years. We continue to do more with less. I think we've been very creative across the district, you know, with the administration and working with the Board of Education and other stakeholders to really, you know, dig down and, and develop these programs for our students with minimal increases. And we've been creative and, you know, and able, you know, we used our federal funds as best we could to develop some of these programs and not have them as long-term continuing costs, and we were able to absorb some of them into the operating budget with, with loss of other programs. But the bottom line is expenditures and inflation is going up at a much higher pace than our state aid is. And there, you, it's black and white. One number's going here, the other one's staying here, and there is no way to make up that gap.
I look at it as the, the tortoise and the hare. I feel like we're the tortoise, and our expenses are the hare, and there's just no way we're going to win the race, but if we plan accordingly, right, as the tortoise, you hope to win the long-term game. I feel like that's what we've been doing as a district, and I'm looking at our 10-year, you know, history trend of our tax levy, and we've done a really solid job. Out of one, two, three, four years, we were under 2%. We were able to go above 2%. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine out of 10 times, we were able to go above 2%. We chose four out of those nine times to not do that. We never exceeded over 10 years a 3% increase. I mean, these are things that we've held the line on as a community. On average, we did, and this is just very, very quick numbers, so I'm telling you it's not correct, but it's roughly from what I'm looking at, we've been on average about 1.75% to 1.8% of an increase over 10 years. We could have gone to about 2.5%, 3% on average every single year and still been under the tax cap. We haven't done that. So I think there comes a time where there's only so much balancing, there's almost so much of an act that we can toe the line to keep us afloat. And I think we did last year, we had this conversation, the year before, we've, we've been continuing to have conversations on what is palatable for our community, and we do a really, really beautiful job. We try our hardest. It's, nobody wants to pay more. We want more, but we don't want to pay more. And we've been giving more, and we've been having these enhancements programmatically, you know, aesthetically to our buildings. We're doing things, and we're working really hard to improve and grow as a district, but we have transportation costs, we have healthcare costs, we have contractual costs. We have things that just don't fit in line with a 1.29% tax cap.
And, and to, you know, similar to everyone's personal life, it's the same thing. Everyone, you know, everyone is feeling it. There are just, there are, similar to your personal life, there are costs that are out of our control, but we have to address them.
So I'm going to continue on my rant because I'm frustrated. As I said, I prefaced it by saying I'm frustrated, so when I get frustrated, I'll ramble. So stop me if I need to, but it's something I'm proud of in our budget, and I've always been proud of this in our budget. We always strive to be at least 50% within our instruction, right? So the, we're in the business of education. We're always 50% or more of our tax dollars. Our budget goes to educating our students. Like, we do a great job of, it's $40 million plus going towards instruction. That means a lot. That's why we have the programs that we have. Something I want to bring to everyone's attention is I'm looking at almost a $6 million transportation line item. It's about 7% of that $80 million. So what can we do possibly? That's a large driver, and we know that we, post-COVID, we had a huge increase in our contracts with our transportation. So I think, Ms. Dunkel, if you and your team could just take, I, we've done transportation studies, we've paid for transportation studies. We can't make our routes more efficient. We can't shorten our routes. But what can we do with transportation possibly to sharpen the numbers there and try to lessen that driver within the budget? I think that's an area of focus that hopefully we can take a look at. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we do have some retirements, so we're going to see maybe some attrition there. We'll see what happens with the classes as far as what we're going to do, but nowhere near a $2.7 million, you know, balancing act. We're not getting that from that many people retiring, and we're going to have to fulfill those positions to some extent because we don't want our class sizes going up to 2530. So we have to have a really close conversation about what is our class size is going to look like and what is our program going to do as we lose those teachers? Are we going to backfill? Are we going to do addition by subtraction? What are we looking at? So I think that's also an important driver, and I think this is the first time in a long time, we always talk about approaching our budget with a scalpel and not a chainsaw. And I don't think anybody's looking here to start the engine, prime it, to start hacking away, but I think unfortunately, from now until our next budget presentation, I think we have to start having a hard conversation about what's the wants, what's the needs, and what can we do without? And it's a really tough conversation to have. You know, I hate when you see school districts, we're cutting sports, we're cutting music programs, we're firing teachers. That's not who Elwood is, and that's not who we want to be. But there comes a time where we have to figure out what is going to be palatable to this community as far as increase, and what, to do so with keeping Elwood with the picture that it's always had. So I think as far as a board, and I'm speaking for myself, but please jump in here, we're tasking you with a very, very difficult task. I don't know how you and your team are going to sharpen the, the numbers, but I think we have to get creative. I think we have to find a way to, you know, enhancements have been happening. Do we continue with our enhancements? Do we get rid of them? Do we backfill programs? This is going to be a, a much bigger conversation, and I don't see anything else increasing for us. It's not like we're getting a windfall of money. The state aid numbers are not going to change. This is reality. So I think the quicker and the earlier on in the budget process that we have the tougher conversation, the better opportunity we have to educate our community, get them involved in the process, so we have a, you know, the So we have a, you know, the best potential to having a successful budget, whatever that may look like, whether it's a piercing of the cap or not. I think we have to have that conversation early on as a board and as a district to make sure that there's involvement. There's knowledge, knowledge is power. And if they, we don't provide it early enough, we're going to really have a problem, I think. Getting voters out to support a budget, that's going to be difficult this year. So I task all of us as a team to really start figuring out what it is that we want to do sooner than later so we can start putting things forward. So, sorry.
We knew this was coming and, uh...
Correct.
There's a lot of work to do, but...
And I'll say too, this is this year, but we have next year also and the year after.
Yeah, and that's when I, when I spoke about the multi-year approach. You know, it is, you know, we do have like a, a rolling kind of five-year plan. Just trying to really develop what it looks like. You know, we, we're going to have a lot of retirements over the next few years just because of the, the makeup of our, you know, teaching staff as far as age and years of service, things like that. It's going to happen across the state. But we always take a multi-year approach, which is why over the past couple of years we've been talking kind of about that this cliff, if you want to call it that, was kind of coming because we have been deficit spending. And, you know, that's sometimes, that's part of operating a school district. You have to deficit spend sometimes. But to your point, there's not, there comes a point where we can't continue to do that. Obviously, a school district cannot go bankrupt. A school district is not going to close. So we have to do whatever we can to keep Elwood, Elwood at this point and be very creative. There are already conversations taking place cabinet level, building level. Everyone, the entire administrative team is on board and will continue to keep all stakeholders involved and continue the conversation.
Thank you. I think that's important. It's the, the fabric of Elwood, right? That's what we really want to continue to keep. And our fabric is patched and woven and parts together with other pieces. But at the end of the day, our fabric's Elwood. So there's got to be some way that we can continue to stitch it and patch it and make it continue to be what we're known for. You know, as you said with your house and property values, we are who we are. We don't have a blue ribbon for no reason. We've done the work, so to give our students and our families the opportunity to continue to strive, we have to make sure that we're putting forward the budget that can sustain this this year, next year. What does our multi-year plan look like? It's something that we really have to have a hard look at. Thank you. Appreciate it. Alrighty, that brings us up to our board recognition of donations, hopefully in that sum of $2.7 million. Let's see.
Maybe someone...
Ah, no, a lot though. A lot of great, eh, rich benefactors looking to donate to your alumni associations.
Come on down, right?
We'll give you a big check. Want me to go? Yes, Ms. Weiss, please.
Yes, okay. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the following donations with gratitude. $200 from Gary and Valerie Hamilton, who are community residents, to support the Blooming Buddies Club, which is the younger club for special ed and athletics at Harley, and is it at Boyd also? Does anybody know it?
Yes.
Yes, it's at Harley and Boyd. So thank you very much that, for your generous donation. We have one smart MX265 interactive flat panel from John Ball, Chief Operating Officer of TEQ, T-E-Q, to the John Glenn High School for the purpose of supporting the Wall of Heroes Project with the value of $2,999. And that's a major component of this presentation that we saw earlier. So thank you, Mr. Ball, that is incredible. We have eight golf bags, 10 golf hats, five boxes of golf balls from the Elwood Booster Club to assist the John Glenn High School varsity golf team with a value of $1,766.25. So thank you to the Booster Club for always supporting our athletics. We also have from the Booster Club $3,680 to support the following after-school clubs for the 2025 winter season. We have the Boyd Sweet and Treats. We have Boyd Coating. We have Boyd Video Gaming. We have Harley Sweet and Treats. We have Harley Coating and we have the Harley Art Club. And those are all multiple sessions of those clubs. And the money gets divvied out per session to provide these wonderful extracurricular opportunities for our students. And we utilize our teachers as resources, which is just an incredible experience for our children. And so we thank the Booster Club and the community for supporting the Booster Club and all the great work that they do. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. May I have a motion for the following? All of the donations that Ms. Weiss just referenced. Motion, Mrs. Scrola, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. All in favor, 4-0. Bring us up to our consent agenda. May I have a motion for our consent agenda in its entirety? Motion by Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I will comment quickly. I'll stay after, excuse me. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, 4-0. With that, we have a decent amount of retirements this evening from some very longstanding employees of the district. We will honor them and celebrate them in June at the end of the year celebration. But we thank them now and always for their years of service and dedication to our students and our district. In addition to that, we also appointed a new mechanic, mechanic three for our building and grounds. Yep, so he was appointed as well. And some other great appointments as well as, I wanted to talk about quickly, hold on. The auctions. I thought it was a fun one in there. I just want to say, the auctions. That's what I want to talk about. Yes, I think it's just awesome that we've had some aging out equipment and ways that we are creative, instead of just chucking things in the garbage and walking away from it, we brought things to the auction house to try to salvage what we could and get some money back on our initial investment. So once again, kudos to the business office for getting creative and trying to find ways to backfill our deficit. So I thought that was pretty awesome.
And also the calendar.
Calendar too, yes. The calendar was approved for the...
School calendar is out, everybody wants...
Down and about for, as approved this evening. So you can figure out your vacations, first day of school, last day of school, and all the holidays as well. All right, thank you, everybody. That brings us up to our second residence remarks. Seeing no residents wishing to speak, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion, Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor, 4-0. I will say once again, wishing everybody a wonderful winter recess. Hope you have wonderful travels and enjoy President's Day. We will see you, uh, we will see you, we'll see you, I'll see you in March. Nothing going on?